Board of officers, if you stand am with kind of order. I will relax for pledge allegiance to the House of Commons. Okay, first thing, I'll understand a motion to approve the minutes from the June sixth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
So moved.
Sorry.
All favoriters?
Aye.
Vote, motion carried. Now I understand a motion to approve the minutes from the July fifth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting.
So moved.
Uh, what call? All favoriters?
Aye.
Vote, motion carried. And now I understand a motion to approve the minutes from the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two committee meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All favoriters?
Aye.
Vote, motion carried. I'll now understand a motion to approve the minutes from the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two special meeting.
So moved.
All favoriters?
Aye.
Vote, motion carried. Okay, we'll have public hearing now on one oh six, three four St. Charles Rock Road. Are there any proponents here? Any proponents? Any proponents? You want to speak, sir?
Yes.
Hi, welcome. Just introduce, I know you introduced yourself to the P and Z already.
Yeah, my name is Kevin Story. I'm a registered engineer and I'm the director of construction and real estate for Salvation Army in St. Louis. I've been here for about eight years with our organization. I've also brought along Major Shel Steinland, who's been with the Army for forty-two years. We also have Gary Parker, our broker from Intelica, and Barry Hath, our attorney from Stinson. So I want to thank you all for having us come.
Was that called? Turn that mic on, Robert.
Sorry.
There we go.
Better?
There we go. I won't say, I promise. Well, thanks again for having us here. This is kind of a culmination of something the Army's been trying to do for the last fifteen years. Right now, we have, we had previous storage adjacent to our building until the point where the building was literally ready to collapse. It was something we were releasing for decades and for pennies on the dollar. And now we've had to move that storage for some of our emergency disaster services goods and our toys and other food supplies that we donate. So over on Macklin Avenue, we currently have a nineteen twenties building down on Morgan Ford, which serves as our emergency disaster services garage. So the building needs a lot of love still. It's way too small for what we're trying to do now and in the future. And so right now, we've got another small kitchen that is at a facility that we call Family Haven Shelter, which is on Page Avenue. And that's where we distribute meals, prepackaged meals, and then send them off to our different residences and other communities and disasters that we're trying to support around town. So collectively, for a long time, we've been trying to find a building of this size that would accommodate all those services under one roof. So we found this building a couple of years ago and made an initial offer. It didn't work out, and the building came back on the market. So we were able to come to an agreement with Schnupmark and Inks to purchase this building. And I've got a drawing up here, which you'll have, that I'd like to show you that explains what we're looking to do for this future building on St. Charles Rock Road.
Everybody's got a copy, Kirk?
Yeah. So it's what we call the floor plan. So on the floor plan, the, I'll go ahead and click the mic here. The front of the building, which is what we're going to use for toy distribution, that's going to be our phase one project. We are going to try to get it, we want to get into the building this fall and have this for what we call Angel Tree Toy Distribution for the needy families around St. Louis and the metro area. And so we will be doing a lot to building, but we will be working quite a bit on the site to clean it up beforehand. Phase two, we plan on building what you'll see on your drawing as a kitchen prep. So we're planning on constructing a one to two thousand square foot commercial kitchen. And that commercial kitchen will be for preparation of packaged meals to go back out to those facilities that we serve. And if there's a, unfortunately, a disaster in the county, the city, or the state. Those are all packaged meals. No one will be coming to the building to eat at all. It's strictly preparing meals and distributing them out to the community. And then another big portion of what we're doing on the building is what we're going to, we're going to have our EDS complete facility here. So we'll have inside the building, EDS offices, EDS training, and probably one or two rooms where if there is, God forbid, a disaster, some of those folks that are volunteers can spend the night before they're shuttled out to wherever they need to go. The outside of the building, we plan on adding around a ten thousand square foot addition, which will take the place of our Morgan Ford facility. And it will house all of our, what we call canteens, which actually, you know, I guess to kind of take it up to the ten thousand foot level, they look like a Winnebago or a food truck. So they'll be all housed inside. No work will be done on the vehicles. It will be strictly to keep, kind of keep them out of the weather, so they're easier to maintain. That's kind of the highlight of the project. We're looking to roughly spend about four and a half million dollars in phase two. So we're committed to our mission and we're committed to the community. We're not your typical developer. We will buy and we will hold forever. And so that's kind of a nutshell. I appreciate any questions that you might have. Didn't mean to try to rush through it, but that's kind of our program.
Good, you did a great job. Questions?
What are you thinking about for the phase two?
We're going to start, I'll go back to the mic here.
So if we're lucky enough to be approved, we'll start design in this summer. We've already got an architect, construction manager, and engineer ready, and we'll engage them this summer. I would say probably four to five months in design. And then by the time we get through all of our internal approvals, all the county and city approvals, I would, would hope that we would start construction sometime next summer.
Thank you.
Yeah, we were under the impression that there was a list of things that we received that you have to do to get, to get occupancy.
Okay.
Right? The sign is on that, but the sign is in your phase two on this note here. It also says in conjunction with the city of St. Louis.
I'm sorry, what was that again? What was in conjunction? I think fixing the sign.
Restored to me, the side, conjunction with the city of St. Louis.
Yeah.
Did we ever agree to that?
Uh, we, at the last meeting, agreed to partner on the renovation of the neon sign.
The board has been through that.
Okay.
Did someone other than the board say something to you about yet?
Um, in our initial meetings with the city, they asked if we would participate in that, and we said definitely would, would love to partner with you on renovating the neon sign.
The discussion that was had was that the sign would be renovated. It's the same discussion as we've had with every tenant that has taken a look at that, that the sign is not functional and it needs to be fixed. There's never been any kind of offer made by the city, any tenant, that we would partner with them for saving the sign.
Okay. So, so that, can you understand what he just said?
So where do we stand with the sign? I guess it's a big question. I'm a little confused. Is it your intention to renovate the sign? I know you brought it, it was brought up at the P and Z meeting as well. I guess there's a little sticking point here of the sign. It's kind of a historical sign, obviously.
Uh, we're happy to partner with you on bearing the expense of renovating the sign.
When you say partnership, could you define that?
Well, in my mind, as I said at the P and Z meeting, that's a fifty-fifty split.
Do we have any idea about what we're looking at for that sign?
I do not. I wrote the report that had the sign scraped and painted, neon lights to be repaired, and the glass blocks to be replaced that are damaged. So basically, our message is renovate it, we're not asking for complete restoration of it.
So the way, yeah, the way we work internally is any, any project over seventy-five hundred dollars has to go out and get multiple bids. So we already worked with a number of sign companies around town. So we'd be happy to, you know, go out and bid that and make sure it's relit and kind of back to its glory from.
I guess the sticking point is the partnership part of it. I don't know if the board's really wanting to partner, any financial issue, a sign on private property, but at the same time, understand it's also a historical value for this community as well. So I guess the board will have to make a decision what we're going to do. Can't really do that without knowing the expense that we're looking at. So I guess we could go ahead and proceed further. If you would open up a, say, all other companies out there and start partnering with everybody. I mean, who can afford that? Understand, that's a good point.
We just have not had any discussion on that at all, so.
If you're going out for bids and you're willing to do this, sort of share. One thing, I have no idea if it would be something that the board or the community would like, but I think it would be a great location, was a great location, is a great location for advertising. And I was wondering if that lower section could be just like some sort of a billboard for, we've been looking at digital signage and possibly multiple locations, but if they could put that as a second option, maybe making those digital signs on both sides, you know, just as an option. But I'm not saying that the city is going to be interested in a fifty percent. All this stuff would have to be worked out with the attorneys, because it is private property, it is a private sign. And if we're spending money on a private sign, that's owned on private land, I mean, all those sorts of things would need to get worked out. But I think that, you know, getting the sign back to its glory is something that the city would be interested in having, residents would be interested.
Residents are definitely interested.
But as far as, like Amy had mentioned, like, I don't know, I think that when you're, when you have LED or if you go with forest tubes, if you have a hailstorm, they kind of a little bit more susceptible to breakage. I mean, nobody's, but if we're going to be potentially partnering, maybe look at possibility, cost upkeep management of LED versus.
I'm going to go on record as being opposed to that idea in every way, shape, and form. We need a digital sign on the opposite side of the rock or closer to the community center. Not something all the way up the street. That's going to get the cost prohibitive for them as well as on digital on that side. And it's not really conducive for what our needs are for the community center. So I'm going to have to oppose that.
It's not a related conversation we can have, whether we discuss.
That's correct.
Going in, any, anything.
If you could still pass this, if the board chooses to, and come back to the signage you, our numbers of what we're looking at cost wise.
Yeah, we're, as an organization, we're pretty minimalistic on signage. So we would probably just put our name below the, the current majorette, draw majorette, and probably have a sign on the front of the building, so.
One of the things I see on your plan is this new exterior golden signage right in the middle of Park Mall.
That may be on the, that's drawing the Alta survey.
Oh, it's probably just a footnote. I mean, we'll, we'll have, I'm sure there'll be a, the sign on the front of the building that'll identify us, and then on the majorette down below where the multiple tenant signs are, I'm sure we'll have our name there.
So there's no, there's no future in any way, in any shape or form, that that be a shelter in any way?
No, not at all, not at all. We, there's very few places in the city or the county that allow a shelter. We have one shelter right now that's on Page Avenue, and it's called Family Haven. And it's been under a special permit for several decades, and will stay under a special. So, yeah, this is not, this facility, as I mentioned at the Planning and Zoning Committee, it's not open to the public in any shape or form. The folks that will be receiving toys at Christmas, that's by invitation only. And then, as I mentioned, the meals will be prepared and distributed to different parts of the community.
Further questions? Okay, I guess the board needs to make a decision what they want to do with the sign sometime soon. You can't approve it.
Keep doing that, working on the sign, apply the date.
This certainly can be done, right?
I mean, this, this, the board is clear on this. These are, you know, Mr. Vogel had a conversation regarding our position on the sign. They know our position on the sign. And once you approve this, you know, you, you, that is, the city attorney can talk about it, you know, the ability for the city to, you know. Yeah, I, I mean, this is, this is the point, and, you know, just somebody's, you know, this is an ordinary business, and their sign is dilapidated, and the building is being already occupied. We would require them to fix the sign. So this isn't anything that, this is different than what other, you know, tenants would have to go through.
No, I just think that last time we had this, or last meeting, we had the intention that they were pretty much doing the whole sign. I mean, it's what we had, I think, intention.
Right, I mean, the city, the city has never, the city has never been, has never, you know, agreed to partner with them.
No, 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 I understand that part, I'm not saying that.
A little taken aback by the, by the stance that they're taking here, because Mr. Vogel had the conversation.
I apologize if I'm confused with that, that stuff.
This isn't, this isn't staff doing this.
No, 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 I, I totally understand. I'm just telling you how, I know, I think how we feel with what we read from last week, what we saw on the paper, seeing that it was a tenant that they were going to take care of that.
That's the, that's the stipulation that came out of P and Z.
This is what they say they're going to do.
That's, yeah, that's their paper. That's what, you know.
That's what I'm saying.
And, you know, last time I checked, you know, tenant, you know, respective tenants will tell the city what they're going to do.
Well, I guess we got a sticking point with the sign. I don't know how you would perceive it that the board can either approve it, contingency on the sign, come back and revisit it, and we get some hard numbers, or they can delay it a month. If we delay it a month, then if we get some hard numbers, is that going to set your schedule back?
No, not at all.
No, not at all. Well, the board needs to make a decision what they want to do to.
I'd like to set it back to last month.
Right now, if we were to approve, they're responsible, they'll pull, getting the sign up to.
Yeah, if you leave, if you leave the stipulation in the condition of use permit, that is correct.
They're responsible one hundred percent, but we're not right now. We approve it the way it is, we go back and set it now, we're negotiating on the sign. Right now.
Well, they don't negotiate, I mean, we don't have the money to.
Okay, hold on, I have a phone call.
So I guess one clarification, when you say if it's going to delay us, I mean, not from opening in November, but it depends. If we're lucky enough to get approved, then we're going to have to set a closing date. And we've, we're already, we've already extended the closing date on a couple of occasions, so that could set us back.
Okay, I guess we got some confusion then. We could go ahead, the board can take it up for approval tonight on the fact that you're going to renovate the sign, and that's going to be your stuff, not with the city partner fifty-fifty. Is that to your liking or not?
If you're going to meet the occupancy expectations.
It's a condition, it is, it is a condition, a condition of use.
That's correct. So, go ahead, you want to speak, sir?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I just wanted to say, I'm Barry Hath at Stinson for the Salvation Army, and, and I was here at the, at the planning and zoning meeting, and it was on the record, all of the positions that the Salvation Army made were about being a member of the community, being a contributing member. Bear in mind that signage on a private property like this would normally be restructured or reformatted. And in consideration, out of consideration for the city's value of the signs, it was the Salvation Army's opinion that rather than removing or giving those to the city to put into another location for their own preservation, the Salvation Army would be willing to partner to preserve those. And that includes not just restoration, it's the utilities to light those, it's to continue to maintain those. And the, bear in mind that this is not a developer that would come in and remove things. They're going to be here for a long time, and that was a very serious commitment, both of time and energy. And also, you have to bear in mind, the Salvation Army has to be good stewards, they're charitable organization. So they have to be very careful about what they're investing in and making sure that these aren't investments that defy the purpose of the charity. All those being said, at the Planning and Zoning Committee, I think we were, we were both there. It was clear from the Salvation Army's perspective, they perceived this as a joint investment, as a partnership, because it has certain benefits for the city that are, that involve things the Salvation Army wouldn't normally do. Salvation Army's still committed to that, but it needs some support from the city. And if it is, and if it is in a position of an unknown expense, the Salvation Army, of course, would have to go through many miles of approvals before they could approve something, a number they don't even know. This is an indefinite number that we haven't priced. And we could have done some things if we had known that it was a hundred percent stipulation, because we, we'd had about a month or so. So it's, it's with that, I ask that the vote please move forward so that Salvation Army's not else, doesn't fall outside of its contingency dates. I will tell you that it's been a, it's been a rigid negotiation, I'll just say it that way. So the Salvation Army is at risk if we cannot get this approved in meeting its contingencies deadline, and we have no assurance that Schnooks will extend it. And then that, and I can tell you, I've worked with the Salvation Army for many years, if they give you your word as a member of the community, they'll stick to it. It's just that it's a request that they haven't grappled with, they don't know the fiscal impact, they're not in the business of doing that kind of historic restoration to personal property and things like that. But in good faith, the assurance is made that as part of the community, and I think you've gotten to know them over the past few weeks.
Yes.
They will jump. You say jump, and they will, they will ask how high, and they will support your community in emergencies, their disaster relief folks will be there for you, they'll be an anchor tenant here. But this was a surprise, and unfortunately, Mr. Story doesn't have the authority, he's not nimble like that, like a sole business owner, to make decisions that would have to be made at a territorial level. So I just.
Then you have to understand that Mr. Cowley and Mr. Vogel do not have the authority to speak for the board either, and we're here to speak for the residents.
Yeah, the board, the planning zoning board is only a recommendation to the board, not the approval of what's to be done. The final decision is made up here.
Absolutely.
And part of it, and misunderstanding.
Thank you.
We've heard nothing about partnership.
One time. Go ahead. We got it?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And so we've heard nothing about a partnership. We've had no discussion amongst ourselves like this. And I don't know how we can make a decision tonight, being put on the staff. I mean, you guys have done a wonderful job with the community in the last five days. And I really, I didn't know that this was going to be put in writing from what we, our last meeting, it was put in writing that you guys had a list of things that had to be done, that you could occupy. So when I saw it in writing, I had to ask a question.
I actually just saw that for the first time today, too, so.
The sticking point, obviously, is the unknown factor, what the cost of the sign would be. The board can't make an informed decision. If we, if the board doesn't go ahead and approve it tonight, then that sign would be, it'd be on you to fix completely. So I guess that, that's the way the, the orders will read, so.
Yeah, it's a conditional.
Conditional use, yeah.
It's special use.
Right. So it would be your responsibility, Salvation Army's, to fix the sign if the board approves it tonight. So we can move forward with that, and you, and then.
That's a decision you.
Yeah, with our leadership support that's here, we will fix the sign in its entirety, and we will bear all the cost.
And I, we do not expect digital LED lighting or anything like that. We just expect it to be in working condition. I will inspect it, and we'll go from there.
Yeah, we've got a few lighting companies that have done some neon, of course, in the past, so we'll go out to them and make sure it's historically repaired correctly and back to its old glory from the back of the day.
Appreciate that. Sorry about the confusion there.
Yeah, sorry about the confusion on our part, too.
Thank you. We're welcoming to the community, we're looking for.
Yeah, we are, too. Yeah, and one of the things I was going to bring up, too, is I had my, myself and another engineer out last week looking at the site, and based on the list that you came up with, we had the identical same list to fix everything on site. We know that we're inheriting a lot of deferred maintenance, and probably for what we're doing, we'll only need a little over a hundred parking spots, and there are several hundred. As you know, it's kind of a concrete jungle. So we're been flipping around the idea of actually taking a lot of the parking out and actually making it into green space, which will kind of beautify the space and the property. And from a selfish standpoint, it will kind of cut down on our runoff and the amount of money that we have to pay for MSD on a yearly basis, as well as asphalt maintenance over the next several decades that will occupy the site, so.
Great, thank you. Further questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, I just want to be there, I really appreciate everything, everything you've done for the community.
Thanks, that's our, that's our EDS group's bread and butter, so they were very excited to help you guys out. Yeah, our EDS director is probably one of the best in the country for what he does, so, yeah, well, thank you, appreciate you.
Certainly appreciate everything, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents? Of course, this is special use. Public hearing for that. I'll understand a motion to approve the special use permit for one oh six, three four St. Charles Rock Road. All favoriters?
Aye.
Vote, motion carried. Good luck with everything, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Now we got this community development block grant funding.
Yes, for the twenty twenty-three community development block grant, historically standing using the CDVG funds for the home improvement program, which helps lower moderate income residents receive repairs to their homes. I'm requesting that all the CDVG monies are put towards the home improvement program for our St. Louis residents.
I think the board's pretty much in agreement on that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Do you have anything else to say? Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Are there any oppositions, any oppositions? Seeing none, I have to close that. I'll now understand motion for approval for the ninety-two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Don't move.
All favoriters?
Aye.
Close, motion carried. We'll now have public comment on agenda items. Public comment on agenda items. Anybody wish to speak on agenda items? Anybody wish to speak on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on. First reading, bill number thirty-three seventy, in order to authorize the city administrator to accept approval from Dell for computer equipment. Second reading, bill number thirty-three seventy, in order to authorize the city administrator to accept approval from Dell for computer equipment. Chief, this is for you guys. If you want to say anything.
Thank you.
And this is being funded by a drug court. Thank you. All right, further discussion? I understand motion for approval?
Don't move.
Go ahead. Roll call?
Jason? Paul?
Aye.
Dirk?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Merttholler?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Tripple?
Yes.
Bill number thirty-three seventy becomes ordinance number thirty-two seventy-six.
Thank you.
First reading, bill number thirty-three seventy-one, in order to authorize the city administrator to submit for a St. Louis County municipal park grant. Second reading, bill number thirty-three seventy-one, in order to authorize the city administrator to submit for a St. Louis County municipal park grant. Tim, what was this grant? You want to explain that?
Yeah, basically, this is to change over the indoor pool to a multi-purpose complex. You could use it for rural, during summertime, during a day camp, you could order a kid's net, you could get them out of storms, get them out of the heat, so we would use it for different things. Might be able to do some classes in that pool in any case.
The other thing is, is while the pool's open, day camps and that session, is that.
I remember. And basically, this is just to make sure, the county wants to make sure that the city's entirely behind us. It's not just my idea, it's just Mr. Cowley's idea, or the mayor's idea, they want to make sure it's a back, you know. The application is due, you know, this month.
I was just up to, looking at yesterday, you know, might be a little too soon, but how do you think they'd go about doing that? Taking some of those glass windows out, you know, saving them, and then getting fill in there?
Yeah, we'd have to get some type of a, of a design in there, but we got those blocks, glass blocks where the whirlpool is.
Right.
I'd say probably ten, fifteen percent of those are broken out, so either just knock If they want to just replace the blocks, they, they can do that. I got an estimate on that, it's been quite a few years ago, I'm thinking eight to 10 years ago. And to, to replace all the blocks, it was going to $25,000. I think we're, you know, we looked at, the architects are looking at saving the windows.
Right.
Yeah, the roof, the roof and the windows are fairly recent, but we'd have to do some HVAC, we got a humidification issue there, some minor redesigning, we would need storage in there, or get that equipment room, if they would have to do that.
What's the initial thinking as far as the whirlpool and the sonnets back there?
Well, that'd be up to you guys.
How about your feeling?
Yeah, well, it's there already, it's in fairly decent shape.
What about the equipment that has to run it?
It's there now, they're going to take a look at it. They're going to take a look at it. We haven't got that far yet.
There is, there's a possibility it could still stay in, you know, with outdoor-
That, the equipment, for the sign where the whirlpool is on that end in the building, they've got their own equipment. For the indoor pool, that's on the other side, towards the section.
That's right. There's a possibility.
And that would have to be gutted out, but we could use that for storage, too.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, I understand motion for approval.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call.
Jason.
Aye.
Felker.
Aye.
Dirk.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Murphy.
Aye.
Murgateller.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Triplet.
Yes.
Bill number 3371 becomes ordinance number 3277. Approval of the monthly reports and work list? Discussion? Seeing none, I understand motion for approval.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment on non-agenda items. Public comment on non-agenda items.
Hello, sir. How you doing? I did come to the last meeting, the last meeting that I was up here, I had told the committee that I was letting all, this is addressing the overgrowth, I was letting all the overgrowths grow back on purpose. Well, four days later, someone came out and issued this, about all them houses on that street should clear the overgrowth. I have been trying to get you to issue this for a year and a half, but you kept giving me excuses, excuses, excuses. I sent you letters, I sent you two sets of pictures, which the sheriff took and did not give to you all, all because he was protecting Sagal, who was the dog catcher code enforcer. He did that at my expense. For a year and a half, I have been trying to get you all to do this to every house on the block. For a year and a half, but when I told you when I was letting it grow back, four days later, someone came out and did this, and issued this. Thank you. Thank you. Four days later, which I had been trying to get you to do this for a year and a half, and you kept putting me off, telling me send to court, and all this and all of that. You know, and that's not right, I was singled out, and he was trying to cover up an employee at my expense.
I don't see it that way.
Oh, I do see it that way. How else can you see it? For a year and a half, I was trying to get you to do this, you kept giving me excuses, excuses, excuses. You didn't do that for a year and a half, and even this was back in June, it's almost August now. Some people took care of this, the rest of them didn't. It says nine days on here. Does anybody check up on this? Well, they haven't. Every now and then it's happened.
Actually, I'm seeing who has and hasn't done that.
Thank you.
Of course, of course, have.
Thank you. I just want to let you know, thank you for issuing this. For a year and a half, I tried to get you to do this, and you kept giving me excuses. But it could have been avoided if you had got the letters and the pictures, which someone took.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on non-agenda items? Anybody else wish to speak on non-agenda items?
I probably don't need this, but I have one of those teacher voices. That can be heard everywhere. I just wanted to, several things, I had a few issues on my mind I wanted to ask you about. And first of all, I want to say thank you to the Board of Alderman, the Mayor, the city administrator, you guys, everybody that pitched in and helped with the cleanup effort, because I happen to be in that floodplain, and it is a mess. But thanks for all the help we've gotten, and especially to John, who's just worked himself ragged over there at the golf course. It's, it's getting there, I think we're going to try it over tomorrow.
And his employees.
And his employees, yes, absolutely. My question is regarding a boundary that MSD, let's see, I back up, I live the last house on St. Damien, the south side of Sanian Park. Sanian, I know, is in charge of cutting, mowing behind the houses, and they have a strip that they take care of. The other section is MSD, I think?
It is.
Is it still MSD?
It still is, right.
Okay. Is there an issue that they're going to try to turn it back over to Sanian, or will that remain MSD?
I'm not sure if you don't-
I haven't heard anything. No, MSD, it can't, it can't be used for anything, it can't, you know, MSD bought it to turn, you know, you're talking about the, what they turned on the houses?
Right, exactly.
They bought it, they bought that, that was specifically to mitigate the flooding.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so they're not going to, you know, nothing's going to be built on it.
Okay, right, I, I understand that.
So it's not even worth having the use for it.
Well, it's funny, because I have one of those unusually shaped backyards. Sanian takes care of cutting behind the fence, and then my whole side and up toward the house is MSD, and before I call them and get them out there, because they have done, I mean, since the tornado, and that's been 10 years ago, 11, I guess almost 11 years ago. The overgrown trees and bushes. I also, my husband and I bought the property next door to us, and the back gate, you literally cannot get out. My neighbor helped me trim part of the tree and the bushes over there, but I'm going to call MSD and ask them what their responsibility is. Initially, I wanted to ask Sanian Board about the overgrowth along the creek bend. In the past, we've always, you know, once or twice a year, I guess, I would see our Sanian workers out there. And not only would they mow, but maybe in the early spring and fall, they'd trim back some of those overgrown trees and bushes that are just, they're really, really overgrown. This is, I guess, the east end of the bridge, the far bridge. The bridge itself is just unbelievable, and then the entry to it, and, and the walkway over on St. Agnes that goes back to the common ground that you cross over the bridges to go to the park. I'm hoping, I know funds are tight, I totally understand that, but it didn't look like that when I initially moved in in 79, and, you know, you can, I know it's hard, but it really needs maintenance. I don't know how much it would cost asphalt, that thing, I think that's asphalt, isn't it?
You're talking about the bridge itself?
No, I'm talking about the walkway now.
It's asphalt.
Okay. And I don't think it's been touched for the 30, however many years I've been there, 36, 38.
Well, we did, we did the walking paths around the car park.
There's another path on the other side, behind the house.
This is a walkway off of St. Damien and St. Agnes Turn. There is no road behind us, so to get back to the park and access across the creek, you have to take that walkway, or the one, I guess, up by St. Linus, like where your mom was. Isn't there a walkway over there?
Yeah, right across from my, through the batter up ball fields.
Right, right, and that's probably, I don't know, I haven't gone to look at that one, but-
It's not as bad as that one down there, up on that airport.
Yeah, it's, it's really in need, it's, it doesn't look good for Sanian in the neighborhood, it really doesn't, doesn't do it justice. So, along with that, those are the only things I wanted to ask about the property before I called MSD and started on them.
We can, we can reach out and try to ask you for it.
Do we have a contact?
We'll go.
You work for MSD? I could talk to you.
You guys are trying to that, let's know if you find out.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Reach out, yeah. Does anybody else wish to speak on non-agenda items? Anybody wish to speak on non-agenda items?
Tony, come on.
Chief, you want to?
Sure, let Tony go.
All right.
Yep. Just keep checking. We'll do that.
Hi, I'm Tony Lamanta, the Municipal Rep for Waste Connections, and I just wanted to come tonight and tell you thank you very much for your partnership with our, our company. We've been going through some changes. One thing we've done is put a GPS system on our vehicles, so now we can have video. And if there is a problem, we can go back, review the video, and see if it's our problem or the resident's problem, and then we could, you know, notify the resident, hey, put your trash out sooner, whatever it might be. We've also put tablets into our vehicles now, so the driver, all he has to do is touch a button, that he's picked up that stop. It's a great system, and we're hoping it does very well for us. Problem we have, though, is this past flood. We did have a flood in one of our buildings, and we lost some of the tablets, we lost some of the computers that we have, I lost a truck, and some of our containers. So we're working on getting that back, all taken care of financially with the insurance company, and we'll get the tablets back on, but we're very excited about it, and I, again, I just want to thank you very much for your patience, Tony, some of the problems that we've gone through. Also, answer any questions you might have.
I'd like to say thank you to you.
Yes, absolutely.
Along with Chief and all this entourage, Ryan Meyer, Bob Lohm, everybody, to all the things that you've been doing this past week. I was a victim, you guys were over there helping. It's amazing. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Very welcome. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I mean, I do, you know, I know all these companies, I mean, just not you guys, but in public, everybody's having problems with, with people getting hired and maintaining the equipment and all that, I mean, if you want to address on anything like that, if you don't mind.
Well, driver-wise, we've, we're, we're kind of excited. We hired a, we hired a guy to go out and find us people, and he's here locally, he came from Federal Express, so he's very up to date on our, on our kind of business. And he's brought us a lot of good employees. Speaking of Republic, we've taken some of theirs, so that's just part of the business.
No, I know, I just know from, you know, residents, you know, saying about the recycle and all that, you know, how that's been delayed and all that, but I mean, what I'm trying to say is, I guess it's just not your company that's having these problems, it's all the, I mean, it's all traffic companies. Everybody's having these problems with the recycle and all that.
Yeah, and if you, if you watch the news, you see, City of St. Louis has the same problem, they do their own, and, you know, it's just lack of people.
They put out a notice while I was on vacation, that said that they weren't even going to pick up trash that I made, the case of which, but they were going to remind residents. So I mean, Republic's having just the same problems, too.
You know, two years ago, I was paying a driver $18, $19 an hour, now I'm paying them $26 to $32 an hour, so it's, it's hard, but you gotta, gotta keep people, so whatever it takes. Trucks have been a big thing. You know, you can only run a truck so much before it starts breaking down. People keep giving me a hard time because, oh, we're always using COVID, but, you know, manufacturers, they just are not producing the parts in a timely manner, and it's because of the COVID, you can't find people to work. And it's been hard. I have, I'm having a hard time with mechanics. You know, the third shift is the big thing, because that's when all the trucks are at, and people don't want to work that shift, so it's even harder, I gotta pay them even more. I allocate, I'm using a third party, I took everything to MAC, found out, they got one mechanic. So that wasn't very helpful. So we're doing our best, but I promise you that we'll, we'll get back to providing the kind of service you, you want us to provide.
Tony, I've known you for a lot of years, and I know that you're in there for the long run, and if everything does, so the question I have with you, like I've always had, get them computers in there that says, yes, they paid, and no, they haven't paid. Okay? Because there's no such thing as you, I've taken a blunt of this problem here and pick it up for the few, but on the streets, there's the group, their word is that they don't pay it because they're going to pick it up anyway. So I want that stopped, that's what I want to say, yes. Thank you, Tony.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the doctor, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate that immensely. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You've been a great partner for this.
Hopefully, actually. So the Mayor and the Board actually took a collection, and I want to, I want to actually, sorry, Ward, I'm trying to have my back towards you, but I want the residents to know that right after the flood, actually, Tony, who's our city representative, reached out, what can we do? There's been a couple complaints, maybe one of the trucks down, you know, and a certain part of our community might not have had their trash picked up. Another time was an ice storm, so they couldn't pick the trash up that way, so sometimes you're only hearing complaints. But I can tell you that your city, along with the police department, everybody together's been working nonstop to go in, even at the front desk, Chris and Brooke fielding phone calls, Mary Kay, even the Board taking these, these calls, and I can tell you, every day they're trying to get a container, which is very, very expensive, to unload it, dump it, bring it back constantly, while we're just going down there and trying to help residents, not because we have to, but this is the kind of community that was said of us, that, you know, this, this is who, who we are, what we represent, helping one another. So we took up a little collection, we're going to tell you thank you, thank you so much, you have no idea, you only hear some of the bad things, but I can tell you, just like Ivan said, a lot of us have known you for a long time, and with all the respect in the world, you're a damned man, and a good businessman, and you really care, and that's the kind of people that I want representing us. So thank you to the Board for having you as our representative in, in your business here. We wanted you to take this. I have one more. George, you want to? Get that ready. Colin, come on out. This is Officer Colin Rumsa, been with us for a little bit, how many years now?
Three, three, August 14th.
And I'm trying to acknowledge more of your officers doing a, a really great thing with the COVID. We really didn't do it because we didn't have meetings, and so we're starting to pick up more and more. Next month, we're going to pick our Officer of the Year, which, believe it or not, he's a candidate for that, so our police commissioners and the super command have to make a hard decision with that. But when this video plays, I want to give a little synopsis of what happened. Bridgette had a bank robbery, and to catch a bank robbery right after it happens is almost impossible to catch somebody doing that in the act. It takes either calling the FBI, you know, and having these colleagues help out with one another, and this is just one of many things that Colin and your police department does on a regular basis, but to actually see the description, catch this guy, and you did find the money in the backseat, correct? Or front seat? Okay, good. And I just thought that that was so impressive, to have his supervisor recognize for that. I've never caught a bank robber, so caught many animals in my career, but never a bank robber. And I just think this is, this is the kind of police department and the kind of police But to actually see the description, catch this guy, um, and you did find the money in the backseat, correct? Or front seat? Okay, good. And I just thought that that was so impressive to have his supervisor recognize, uh, for that. I've never caught a bank robber, so, um, caught many animals in my career, but never a bank robber. And I just think this is, this is the kind of police department and the kind of police officers that you have. They're not avoiding danger. And, uh, and for you to actually recognize that car, recognize the suspect. Didn't he have like a Santa hat on or something like that back then? December, so of la, November of last year, right? Right, or December?
December.
December? Thank you. And, uh, we're just gonna show you the video and then hand him this, uh, certificate. And wanted to acknowledge like what great police work and what an incredible police officer you are. Hope you guys enjoy the video.
Somebody's here. Hey, hold down your window! Hold down your window! Hold down your window! Hold down your window! Oh, hold on. What's going on? You got anything on you that you need to know about? No? Sure? What's going on, man? Just do a call for me. No? All right. You're driving pretty quick. All right. Hey, Bridgeston had a couple calls about you. What was going on at their bank?
Were you, were you scanning that? Are you, are you counting, please?
No, I was saying, yeah, right here, you're also speeding down the Rock Road. That's my probable cause is make a stop. But they're talking about a blackmail with, uh, Santa hat. But wait, I don't know what's going on. No, don't, don't be grabbing in your pockets. Do I get any sample here, possibly? Don't, don't, don't ask questions. Vice Bridgeston, I had that white Chevy sedan with a white male with a Santa hat. See if they have a stop and hold on him for any reason. I heard them talking about him possibly with an arm at First Community Bank. Hey, sir, right now, I would advise you that you're not under arrest, all right?
Barely seen him cut that vehicle foul.
We're gonna see what's going on, all right?
I'll go on now.
Go ahead and spread your feet for me. Hey, you mind if I, uh, complete search on you? Search all your pockets and everything. You okay with that? Can I get a verbal yes? So you're not gonna verbally consent to me searching you? All right, that's fine. Sir, you ain't got no weapons on you?
Did you already take everything out of my pockets?
No. Can I take?
I got my fist.
What?
I got my fist.
I understand you guys. Secure the vehicle. Secure the vehicle. What? I don't know.
I towed the car.
Okay.
It's dangerous.
It's dangerous? Why is it dangerous to tow the car? Sir, tell me, why is it dangerous to tow the car? What do you got on that car? You got anything that the public needs to know about? Hey! Two oh four, what did Bridgeston have exactly?
It was originally a bomb threat, and they said it's gonna be a robbery. They said it's like that.
Two oh four, all right, hey, we need to start setting up and clearing this intersection because he's making grudge with the car. Get this intersection closed down. Come on, get in the back of my car. Get in the car. That's not far enough. You need to go a lot further to get this bomb out. Two oh four, he's making spontaneous utterances that he has a bomb in the car. I ain't saying we need to get way further back. Free, you got that? Hey, that's clear, but let's, uh, stop traffic at least in front of the station. Let's get down to, uh, St. Monica, uh, in front of Burger King.
Wow, that's incredible. Presenting this certificate of commendation to Officer Colin Rumsa for his quick thinking and bravery in December two thousand twenty-one while stopping a fleeing bank robber who threatened that he had a bomb. That's incredible police work.
Congratulations.
I'd like to, uh, add something that I read, um, this, uh, morning that there was, uh, Indy, uh, just north of Indianapolis, I forgot exactly what town, about forty minutes from there, an officer made a traffic stop. He just got out of the military, a US veteran, and, uh, was shot and killed in that stop. And I use this story now for the public that I usually give a lot of those once a week. That could easily happen there. You're an incredible police officer. Congratulations. Great feeling to it. For mayor, citizens, thank you.
Great job. I now need a motion to go into closed session for colleagues.
Good evening. My name is John Vane. Um, my grandmother and my, my mother was raised on St. Michael. Just so you have context that I'm coming here as a representative of a story you heard about a year and a half years ago called My Own Home. And what we've been working on during the last year and a half as prices went up is talking to people who have difficult problems. Um, that's very difficult because the value of the properties have gone forward. They have, uh, given an increased valuation and made it very difficult to talk about a mission statement. And our mission statement in My Own Home is very simple. We want to purchase, refurbish, and sell to families that have gone through a mortgage training program homes. And, and as an example, we just closed on our first house in Cooldale at eight four hundred Evans. And that home, uh, if it was fixed up and renting, would rent for about thirteen hundred dollars a month. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath home hall. The rental price of that is just gross to me at this stage. It's expensive. Everything's expensive. And, but if you own that home, have a mortgage, pay your taxes, have your insurance, you're talking about seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. So that family, as opposed to being a renter, now is a mortgage owner. And what we do is, is, uh, not for profit, is we take back a second deed of trust, which allows these families to get a bank loan or an FHA. And the FHA, both, and the banks we're working with are very excited about that opportunity. And you're gonna say, why are banks excited about helping people? Well, believe it or not, they get points. And I don't know how else to describe this, but it's, I believe it's called CRA, the Credit Recovery Act, I believe. And in there, if they make, uh, loans for homes in Ladoo, Alveg, Freeport, they get no points. But when they come north of Olive Street, they get points. So their interest is not only to help families, but also to help themselves. And so the goal has been looking for homeowners. We all know Thirty-Six Thirty-Six Ashley. Got stuff falling over, it's overgrown. We have reached out to the owner, who's in Germany. And he's another person who, when you do it on Facebook, and I'm no technical person, but when you do it on Facebook, you know the person's read your message because a check mark comes up. So we know he's read all the messages, but he's not moved to do anything about it. And that's what we're running into. So we went to St. Louis County's access property list. And in St. Anne, there's a lot of lots and, um, some homes that are on that list. And a few more that may come up after the August twenty-second auction for St. Louis County. And, excuse me, I apologize, I'm a little short for it. Um, the key for us is to ask the city. And first clarification is, I'm not asking you to be in the real estate business. I'm asking you to go to the county for thirty-five dollars, transfer the property, and then put the property into an auction. Public, uh, Mr. Garrett knows because it's Cool Valley, his firm represents Cool Valley. And we went through this process with them. We're not looking for you to do something for My Own Home. We're looking at you to do something to improve properties and do something that is for sale, not for rent. And the specific bid that Cool Valley did said, bid whatever you want, but it must be for sale. So we were the lower bid, but we won because the home is for sale. We took out sixty yards of trash in the last two weeks in this business. That's a lot of trash. And we start renovation next week. Ten weeks, put the home up for sale. We'll get a family from beyond housing, Catholic charities, Lutheran senior services, and so on. So what I'm asking the city to do is to, I've thrown up copies, uh, from Sarah Bader, who's our attorney. We're basically all cousins on this committee. Um, and I guess, can I hand it to this? Uh, okay. These are just copies of an ordinance, and this ordinance just says, according to St. Louis County, you have to give yourself the authority to transfer these properties into your name for thirty-five bucks. And then set up a place to do it. My only plea is that at the end of the day, the, the goal would be that they would be for sale homes, either new built on empty lots or the broken down houses that are available. I've driven up and down these streets because I've known them since I was a little kid. And I have seen the pin-down signs, and we've reached out to those families. Some of them have been very kind and called us back. And they're all waiting for a payday. We're not able to do that. We have to see the property as its value, put in the improvements, and not overbuild. We are not investors like you got ugly houses or, uh, Velocity or any of those. They overbuy, overimprove, and then rent at high rates. We are not going to do rentals. So what will help us get this thing catapulted, and I'm sure the staff or the board can look up St. Louis County apartment revenue, excess prop, you can see the same enlistment. We are hoping to get a contribution of a vacant lot in St. Anne from a bank that foreclosed on it, where there's a moldy house that tore down. They have no use for it, but as a five-one-C-three, they can get a better tax benefit than recouping their losses. So we will know that in the next few weeks. But, uh, that's part two of what I'm asking for, is that if you do do something like this, that most of these vacant lots are what I call the old Baderot small lots for small houses. Two bedrooms, one bath kind of the kind. After talking to Mr. Vogel, getting an education on what has to be built according to code and all that. My second part of my request would be the board would pass for recovery of these properties, whether, again, it's for My Own Home or anybody else with an interest in doing it. That you would pass what I call a mere ordinance. So the house to the right, the house to the left, the house behind you, the house in front of you. Build a replica house. So you're building to the neighborhood. You're not overbuilding it, you're not underbuilding it, you're building to the neighborhood. And there's ways to do this. And what I'm talking about is maybe setback lines don't work on that lot, but maybe you could go deeper instead of widening. Every lot's different. And so the mere idea gives us a chance to put something on those lots. So my request to you is twofold. Number one, reminding you, you're not going into the real estate business. You're saying, here's one, two, three, four, and about twenty. About twenty lots and houses that are available in the excess inventory. Let's get them off the books because those lots and things, as I was told, the first job of the city is public safety. So cutting the grass, picking up bad tree limbs, whatever, that costs the city money. Times are tight for everybody. If you can get those things off your books, you're benefiting the city directly, not indirectly. That's my wish. My hope is that you consider this, both the ordinance to give yourself the authority in St. Louis County, and then what I call the mere ordinance for building houses that reflect the neighborhood and doing that sort of thing. That would be my request.
Sounds good. Uh, I know we've certainly, uh, seen a boom with the hobby market skyrocketing the last couple of years. Unfortunately, they've brought more renters in and we, we need more homeowners. Yeah.
I would definitely want to look into this more.
Absolutely. I, I, I was kind of puzzled why you didn't proceed further when we talked about it a couple of years ago. And I understand what happened with everything, but, yeah, we'd love to, you know, help you in any way we can. I'm sure Bob can get the list going, and we can work to, we can put this on a committee agenda or an order.
And I think the first thing we need to do is to have the discussion with the attorneys so they fully understand.
Yeah, we'll have to discuss it legally.
They're, I mean, we just closed with them, so they know.
But we have to get educated as a board and discuss it and see how everybody feels as a whole. But, uh, I'm certainly in favor of proceeding from the city standpoint, mostly how the board feels. And, you know, I think it's a great idea. We'd love to see more homeowners, like, or people taking care of the property, you know?
We're gonna take Ivan, um, abandoned houses to be torn down, you know, you're gonna take that home.
No, we do need more homeowners. I've just, you know, been just going in there to bomb and rent them out, but that's what we, that's too much of.
Well, you know that little bar on Beatty Road, um, I think it's called Beatty Road, it's by the sweet spot.
Twister.
Twister, okay. They came in, they gave the people a number, and then they went in, and they sent it to us. And we said, we can accept it for free. And we said, we can accept it for free, because the amount of money that the house needed was above. I'll, I'll give you numbers. We were able to purchase the house in, um, Cool Valley for forty-one-hundred-and-ten dollars. We're gonna put about sixty-five into it. We have an as-built appraisal of a hundred thousand dollars from the bank. We're gonna sell the house at eighty-nine thousand bucks. So if the appraisal's real, the people will have a look at equity, and we will take back ten percent. So basically, they're gonna have a first deed of trust for eighty grand. We will take back the second deed of trust, and at the end of five years, if they pay their taxes, pay their mortgage, uh, keep it up, all that kind of stuff, keep their insurance, then we will forgive that difference. And what that means to a family is free cash flow on a monthly basis of about five hundred and fifty dollars, as opposed to being a renter. And when you have renters, they break the rules. When you have homeowners, they abide by the rules. It's very important. And it's old school, it's called broken windows, but I really believe homeownership. And just so you know, Mr. Mayor, it started, this was when they closed St. Greg's. And we, as cousins, we're all sitting around talking about all of our memories with St. Greg's. My mother and father had their first, they were the first wedding reception at that church when they got married. So it's, this is personal to us, we're trying hard. We are not interfering in anybody's life, because a lot of the people we talk to, um, say, oh, I get eleven postcards a day from. We buy ugly houses, we buy bad things, we, whatever. So I write handwritten notes, and in those handwritten notes, I say, here's who we are, here's our family roots in the community, and here's what we're trying to do. We have a secondary program that, we think our first home is in Richmond Heights. Basically, it's an elderly lady, her house needs about forty thousand dollars worth of work. If it was in good condition, it would sell for about a hundred and thirty thousand bucks. Problem is, it's not there. And she knows that she's gonna get undercut. So we are making a deal where we'll put in the money, and then anything above what the value is after our expenses, we split sixty percent to her, forty percent to us, as a risk factor for that house. And we pay, we take back the mortgage, she's out of, during the redevelopment, she's out of the, uh, mortgage business. She's no longer paying that note. So that's where our forty percent goes to. So that's our goal, and I appreciate your help.
Well, I appreciate it, and we'll take a look at it, and we'll discuss it in the closed session with our attorney, and bring it up at committee at some point for the ordinance, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming, I appreciate it. Appreciate it. Now I want to understand the motion to go into closed session.
Sorry.
Hold on.
Asinger?
Aye.
Felker?
Aye.
Dirk?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
So we are in closed session.
Bring that family.